Okay, we will call to order the February 12th meeting of the Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:05. I want to thank everyone for attending, both members and the public. As for the calling to order and seating of alternates, it looks like we've got Alex on board and we've got Steve on board. So I just want to be clear, I don't see Jerry and I don't see Tom Hastings. Jerry DeFrain and Tom Hastings, is that correct? Speak now, forever.
Doug, Doug Jenny just came on too.
And Doug just came on, thank you Doug. Okay, so in this instance, I am going to seat Steve Pesh for Jerry DeFrain. And we'll seat Alex for Tom Hastings. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Who leaves me eight? Who am I missing?
Mr. Nord.
No, Nord's here.
Oh, he just came on, okay.
Richard's on. On my listing.
Catherine.
Did you count yourself?
Thank you. I saw Jeff sitting here, but I just counted, I should have counted myself twice. Thank you very much. That rounds it out, okay. Very good. Okay, so we have the alternate sat. I am looking for approval of the minutes from the January 8th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is it seconded? Any, by Jeff Dillinger, thank you. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes from January 8th, 2024 for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining?
Alex.
Alex abstains, wasn't here. And very good, okay. Opening for public comments or items not listed on the agenda is the, anyone from the public would wish to speak, please either electronically raise your hand or wave me down. Hearing none and seeing none, we will move on out of public comment. Onto bills, I do see there's one listed for the Chronicle for one of our paid advertisements for hearings, 7:32. Any other outstanding bills?
None on my end, Jeff.
And Mark, you didn't receive anything, did you?
No, I did not.
Okay, very good. We'll move on from bills. Correspondence, and what we received was a correspondence from Prague and it was a series of nine of their updates from the various both surrounding towns as well as adjacent towns. I'm not going to read through the nine of them for both my throat's own sake and for your listening pleasure. Just hitting if you haven't had a chance to review them. One is from Mansfield regarding extension of a moratorium on high-density housing development. One is from Southington on sidewalk extensions. Another from West Hartford on Wendy's Restaurant, the raising and redevelopment of one from East Granby regarding requirements regarding agricultural zone. One from Bolton on comprehensive planning and zoning regulations. Text amendments to those. West, East Windsor zoning regs on warehousing districting. Bloomfield zoning regs about commercial districting, districting regulations. Vernon. Text amendment regarding fees for legal notices. And the last is from Tallinn for the zoning board regarding, excuse me, zoning regulations regarding farm breweries, farm cideries and farm distilleries, the allowing of the selling of alcoholic beverages manufactured at those sites. Fun reading for all.
If I could make just one ironic comment, is anyone driven on I-95 from Four Corners down towards Tallinn? And notice what's being built on the left-hand side of the road there?
On the left-hand side of the road.
It's where the old lumberyard used to be.
It's a huge apartment complexes.
It's like a whole new town, so I found this idea of a moratorium. I don't know what they would do with anymore. I mean, it's, it's, it's at least 50% bigger than what they built in downtown stores.
Yeah, this is Mark Schenoble, I mean, they started that about eight months ago.
Yeah.
Well, they started permitting for that about two years ago.
Yeah, but I find the moratorium kind of an oxymoron, so to speak. I mean, how much more could they possibly be, be, be building in Mansfield?
There's proposals for another 1,200 units, Dick. There's, there's tons of build out there. So, you know, that's, I mean, that's not our problem.
No, it isn't, but I just found the, you know, I hadn't driven by that, that area until just recently and I was amazed at the size of it.
You just missed two steps and dancing over there, that's what it is. Okay, very good, thank you. We have nothing on the agenda for a public hearing this evening, so I'll move on to number seven on finished business. I do have a quick update, I apologize to the board, I've been very delayed with other priorities, however, I did get out this week the updates. The communication to the boards and commissions regarding the P O C D. I was able to gain information from Mike, he found word document copies of them, electronic word document copies, as well as Dick found his also, and he did provide us a stick, a thumb drive with those documents on there. So those have been forwarded on to the chairs of most of the committees. I was not able to find anything for energy. So I've reached out to Susan Eastwood of the Ashford Clean Energy Task Force to see if she still has electronic copy that she can access.
I think in the package that I sent you included the energy section.
Okay, very good, so I'll relook it, I'll go find that and I will go through that again, thank you, Dick.
Yeah, and I had also tried unsuccessfully to get Phil check to give me high-resolution copies of the figures. I don't know if the resolution of what is in that package is sufficient for Mike to do your thing. Mike, have you looked at it all yet?
I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but we also have some files based upon what I found and sent to Jeff previously, so I'm hoping that we have the originals on the server at Town Hall.
They looked, they looked pretty good with the graphics as well as the photographs and such too, so the resolution looked good.
Yeah, what I had that I gave you was originally Mike Gardner went up to NCOG and had got a copy of it from them. And then I'd got a copy from Mike, so if Mike had put it on the town website, they should be the same things.
Okay, very good, thank you. Luther, you have your hand up.
Yeah, Jeff, I actually had meant to send a reply and follow-up, it wasn't clear to me whether you were sending out that communication to the Planning and Zoning Commission members as something to discuss at tonight's meeting, or if that communication was intended for me as the chairman of the Ag Commission. If it's the latter, I had no attachments with the message that you sent, but it was indicated that there should have been attachments.
Okay, very good, thank you Luther, I'll make sure to resend that to you with the attachments. The intent was going to the chairs. The letter itself had been discussed at the previous.
Yes, yeah, I just, you know, before making assumptions, I was just looking for clarification.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's no problem, it's, it's, it's on our future agendas moving forward to take that up.
It probably, it probably would have, and if it had been on there, you probably wouldn't have had the question as to whether it was, because it would have been the Ag Commission section, so.
Fair enough.
I will fix that, thank you. Mark.
I just want to let you know that it looks like Tom Hastings has called in, his phone number 1413.
Yo, excellent, yes. Tom?
I'm here.
Hello, Tom, thank you for joining.
I apologize for the, for the lateness.
That's, that's okay, so at that time then, Alex, we'll move you back to the world of alternate and we'll seat Tom. Hastings. Thank you for your service, Alex.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so again, I hope to get some good feedback regarding the information that was sent out, the request for information. I've sent a couple of them out to various, like Public Safety went out to both the Board of Selectmen as well as the Fire Chief to gain back information on that and any information they'd want to try and fit into the section for public safety, so there's probably another one I should probably send out, and the one I think about it, Luther brought it up, is I know under the Ag section, there is the discussion regarding the farmer's market, and I know the Conservation Commission is very involved in that too, so I'm going to make sure I forward that on to them also, especially under Loretta Robel's chairmanship. Any other questions or comments regarding the information gathering we're going through right now?
I'll bring it up one more time, but at some point in time, Jeff, you're gonna have to decide who's in charge of organizing this whole thing.
Well, we are going to be, again, we're going to be contracting with Tyke on this, and yes, we will put together a full committee on this, and I believe we had a few volunteers the last time around. So we'll bring that together, just trying to get some of the balls rolling for gaining information and then the committee coming together, both in the public as well as the board members.
Yeah, if Mike's group can serve the same function as NCOG had served previously, that would be fine, but that's still not, doesn't serve to organize things. Someone needs to be quote-unquote the chairman of this whole thing. That was me, that was me, you know, 10 years ago. It's not going to be that me now, but I, I know that it was a lot of personal work and it needs to be someone that is identified sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Anything else from anyone? Okay, very good. When we got to number eight, new business. We had the opportunity last week, or excuse me, last month to have Charles Vidic speak to us on some of the material that he had provided from his experience dealing with land development in the state of Connecticut. And what we've decided to do was we sent a letter out to the landowners in the IID zone and invited them to come and speak to us regarding their information and what they feel about that area. And Mike, I do see Mr. Rotalakis on, he said hello. Do we have anyone else that you know of that has indicated they're going to be on or wanted to be on?
I didn't hear from anybody directly, there's a couple of names on the attendance list that I don't fully recognize, so it's possible there are others here, but no one, no one called the Town Hall.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mike. All right, so we will open it up to the property owners, if they'd like to make a comment or statement regarding the IID zone and the commission's efforts now and going forward. And so I open it up to, again, a hand wave or an electric hand, whichever works, whoever wants to speak. Mr. Rotalakis.
Yes, good morning, I mean, good morning, good evening, Mr. Chair and other commission members, this is Steve Rotalakis of the Ashford Realty Trust LLC, which owns the, I guess probably the super majority of the land in Ashford in the IID zone. It's owned the property since 2005, I believe. And since that time, the world has changed relative to commercial development. And although the zoning regs have remained the same. Initially, when I bought the property, I was approached by people interested in doing some retail development, which is allowed by special permit in the IID zone. Following the Great Recession as well as the revolution in online purchases and the I guess the demise of bricks and mortar retailers, interest in that has certainly waned. You know, I had received interest, you know, from other people looking to do a wind farm, because there is a ridge on the property that is one of the highest points in the state of Connecticut, east of the Connecticut River. I received interest from someone who wanted to do a water park and some other kind of unusual uses. Although there are various uses that are allowed by special permit in the IID zone, I don't think that any of them meet the current market demands. And I don't want to, you know, I've read the materials that Mr. Vidic submitted and I don't want to be critical. All I would say about what Mr. Vidic has submitted is that in your bylaw, you have a provision that allows for peer review that the applicant has to pay for. I think some of the conclusions that Mr. Vidic reached are kind of outside his lanes of expertise. And I don't claim to be a hydrologist, a botanist, a PE or any of that, I'm not. But I, I know that the town has an opportunity for peer review. And I don't see any any need for the town further restricting any of the uses or any of the potential density allowed within that zone. I, I think that I know you have a moratorium at least temporarily in place. I'm not sure you needed it, because I don't exactly have people banging down my door other than potential uses that would require a text amendment. And again, I, I think that the highway is possibly the best asset that that property has. And I think there is an opportunity, and I hear you loud and clear from both times that attempts were made to bring in what has been characterized as a mega warehouse. But I, I think that some accommodation has to be made in the IID zone to allow for warehousing and distribution, because the best asset you have in the IID zone, well, there are a couple. Cup, number one, it's right on the highway. Number two, it is a fairly well-designed interchange for these types of uses. Number three, it's on the edge of your town. And I know that we heard the last time we were here, about a year ago, looking for a text amendment, we heard all sorts of you know, anecdotal stories about truckers looking to go down, you know, Route 44 through the center of Ashford. I, I don't think that those are realistic, but again, I hear you loud and clear about the mega warehouse. But I think that there would be an opportunity to have some sort of smaller distribution on the 93-acre site in a manner that minimizes the disturbance on the site, the earth, earthwork, the walls, the amount of impervious. You know, I, I think that about issues of water quality, I think those all can be addressed, I think that the property can be built in a responsible, sustainable manner. And all I'd be looking for is some sort of relief to allow for warehousing and distribution of a smaller scale on the 93 acres, as well as maybe some companion uses on the others. You know, I, I think that the, the bylaw contemplates large-scale uses, I'm not saying that you need 1.2 or a million square feet of manufacturing. I'm not sure that that is the best use there. But again, I, I think that this can be done in a responsible, sustainable manner. And I would encourage the board to look at uses that could be put there, and I think that warehousing and distribution, you know, the board may have, the commission may have ideas as to what types of warehousing and distribution will be appropriate. But I think that is a viable use that the market would support, and I think it would i- if you built something there, it would encourage further development that would expand your tax base and be a benefit to the town. I, again, I appreciate the invite. And if any of the commission members have any questions to me, I certainly try to entertain them. Again, I'm not a hydrologist, a botanist, a PE, but I do have some experience in this regard. And I have developed properties for the past 40 years. And I have some understanding as to the market, and I think I have a fairly good reputation in the towns that I've done working.
Thank you very much. Richard, is your hand up?
Yes. Let me expand a little bit on the provisions for the due diligence, because a number of the people that are on is called, probably not aware of that provision. Excuse me. The, one of the things that we added after there was a proposal for a waste management facility is we added in a provision that anyone that wants to build a large-scale facility or any development within the town put up a percentage, I think it was 1% or 2% or 15 million dollars, and that money could be used by the town to do due diligence. For instance, all of the issues that have been raised concerning the rock on the property, the water quality, all of those items, the town would have monies put up by the proposed developer that the town could use to hire experts that would look at all of those issues. So it, it's not an expense for the town, it's an expense that would be incurred by the person proposing to do the the development. And I would also add that if you look through the general discussion of what has been proposed for that area, it was always, you know, proposed to be a industrial-commercial development area. It was talked about in general terms before the specific occupancies. So hence, you know, some of the things that were described in the survey that Mike DiMatto sent out to the town are well within the things that Steve is, is proposing. So, you know, my, my sense is that, you know, I was in favor of revisiting some of these items and I, I still am at this point. But I also want to just make sure that everyone understands, there's all of the concerns that have been raised by numerous people, those would be addressed fully technically by funds put up by the proposed developer.
Okay, thank you, Dick. I, I have a quick question, Mr. Rotalakis. Do you have any type of, with the most recent activity for the text amendment and such, and I know there was a lot of proposed study of the area, do you have any material available to you, access to any material from you start to name, things like hydrology, the engineering, anything along those lines, was anything done along those lines, that's that anything that you're able to share with the commission? If not now, in some printed form?
Those were studies that were prepared in conjunction with the text amendment, we had experts, that was Campanelli Group, who was going to be my joint venture at the time. Those were traffic engineers, PEs. I think we had an economic expert submit something. Those are reports that were done in conjunction with the text amendment. Now, I, I don't have anything myself, I have not commissioned anything for that. I, what I am saying to you is that I, I think that if we, if I had a proposal in anything that I would look for in terms of a zoning amendment, I wouldn't expect would be an allowed use, but would be a use that would only be granted through the special permit process under your bylaws. At that time, I would have my experts, wetlands, traffic, engineering, whatever, submit the relevant reports, and as Mr. Williams said, I would be expected, the applicant would be expected to provide funds for the town's peer review. Anything at this point, any speculation as to what could be built on the property and where on the property is just that, at this point, speculation. So it's kind of hard for me, you know, when I look at Mr. Vidic's report, to disprove a negative. I, I don't have anything in that regard. Again, I, I think he's, I think he's a little outside his lane. I'm not saying that he doesn't have some expertise as a public health expert, but certainly he's not a PE, a hydrologist or a botanist. I don't think that's disputed. So I think for him or, or anybody, to keep Ashford rural folks, to say your property is unsuitable for this, that, or the other thing, is really not fair to me, it's really not fair to you. I think that let an applicant come forward and let that applicant provide the resources for the town to get its peer review. And, you know, let, let's see where the cars may fall. And again, it's a special permit, there's nothing in there that says it's an allowed use, that I go to Town Hall and Mr. DiMatto's got to give me a building permit, I'm not expecting that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that very, I I appreciate that. I appreciate your candor. I appreciate your information. Um, and I I hope you can see that, you know, in reaching out to the the landowners, it's what we're trying to do is get a even uh, well-balanced uh information so that we can make an informed decision uh as a board as we move forward with this. Um, I I had a question. I lost the question. Are there any questions from any other board members? Again, this is not a hearing. This is just an informational session, so we're just trying to uh share information and find out, uh, you know, as I said, both sides on this. Um, I did think of my one question, though. I know, uh, have you been in any uh talks with economic development? And have they been able to share with you or offer anything up that helps you?
I I have had, uh, I went and I met with Economic Development, I believe, on the twenty-fifth of January uh in the basement of your town hall. I appeared before them. And I think they are working on a submission to your commission relative to their recommendations.
Oh, okay.
Which may be kind of consistent with what I alluded to earlier about maybe something that's smaller in scale that minimizes disturbance, but still can be built in a responsible and sustainable manner.
Okay.
With mega warehouses.
Yes. Uh, Richard, your hands up?
Uh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Richard. I think I think Mark had his hand up first. I'm sorry. Hang on. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just had a question for the the property owner. Um, aside from the the original text amendment that was proposed, you know, which would allow mega warehouses to be built. Um, is there anything that that you find particularly egregious in our current regulations to the development of the property?
The the, there's, there's nothing egregious. I, and again, I don't view, I I'm not an expert in Connecticut zoning. I'm I'm not even, I'm not an expert in Massachusetts zoning. But I, i- in my opinion, I don't think zoning can be static. And I think that, uh, I'm not gonna say that your your zoning article is a relic, but I I don't think it's kept up with what the needs uh or uses that are currently in demand are for properties such as this. Um, you know, I I I don't think that, and again, uh, nothing's, you know, the, I I I think that it's a well-meaning, well-written bylaw, but doesn't reflect current meki- uh, market conditions.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that came out to me um during the, you know, the discussions on the original text amendment, you know, was height regulation. Um, you know, there, and and I'm, you know, speaking just from my personal research that that our current height regulation does, does seem to be, um, you know, limited for, as you mentioned, current development, you know, for for honestly, any type of warehouse that, um, you know, s- s- height, height needs to be higher than our current regulation. If if we were, we're looking to allow, you know, any type of warehouse or distribution center. I think it's, it's it's limiting as it currently stands on its own. I think it's limiting to development. And again, you know, that may be what, what is decided upon, but as it currently stands, you know, that that I do find a little archaic.
I I would agree with you.
Current regulations. But that may be, you know, what the commission as a whole decides upon.
I I would agree with you, but I'm not necess, I I don't necess, I'm not necessarily convinced that that you need seventy-five feet, but I I think something in between seventy-five and thirty-five might be reasonable. You know, with a, with a smaller footprint.
Uh, Jeff, if I can jump in with
Go ahead.
Comments, uh, since I was the one that uh was involved in writing and rewriting these regulations back X number of years ago. Uh, didn't really give much thought to the height. At at that point in time, we simply left things the way they were. Uh, however, we did add in one of the special permitted uh u- uses is a hotel. And a hotel is gonna be a lot more than the, than than two stories or so tall. It's, you know, mo- most of them are gonna be three, four, five stories tall. Uh, if I also look at the development I referenced uh down in Mansfield, I'm not sure what the height of that new development is down there, but it's sure looks like it's at least four or five stories tall. Uh, so, you know, this, this height issue wasn't something that was uh debated and thought through. It was simply carried through from what was already there. And then one other last point. There's been a lot of talk about the uh, the rock and the pyrotite and all of that. Uh, if one drives down to Buckland Mall and looks at the rock that's exposed there, that's the same kind of rock that we're talking about that would be at this site. And if one goes down to Route six in Mansfield and looks at the rock that's exposed by Walmart, same kind of thing. Uh, and that was uh excavated and apparently no one had a problem with it at that point in time. But but still, I would go back to the point is that there is funds to go through and thoroughly research this and prove whether this is an issue or not uh with those due diligence funds that are part of the development.
Right. Luther.
Thanks, Jeff. Of course, now my clock's gonna chime. Um, so, uh, just really briefly, cause I I, I don't want to lose track of what I think I understand the purpose of this part of our agenda to be is not really to debate um too much, uh, you know, about writing the regs at this point, but to listen and be receptive and and understand what what might be um limit, limiting development or what might be desirable from the property owners. Um, I I do just wanna clarify very briefly because I want people to understand. Um, I just wanna make sure we're trying to get accuracy that um, yet, you know, Dick was a significant part, as we all know, of uh the revisions that led to these regs. Um, there also were others of us that are still on the commission at this point that were involved in that process. And I can tell you that the height was discussed, the height was something that we looked at and addressed. I'm not saying it needs to maintain at thirty-five feet. The point of the thirty-five foot limit was something that was set by public safety with fire. It, in all likelihood, is because the fire apparatus in this town carries thirty-five foot ladders. Um, thirty-five foot ladder won't even service a thirty-five foot tall building, but that's the correlation that was discussed at the time.
Yeah.
Apparatus has changed significantly uh in our surrounding towns and mutual aid. I won't speak to the fireworthiness of any of this. That's the job for the fire chief and the fire marshal and all those people. But that was the limiting factor on height for the town, not just for this zone when it was set. And so it may be an opportunity to take a hard look at revision, understanding the resources that may or may not now be available to the town to set height restrictions and also what the other parameters are in terms of viewscape and in terms of all those other things. So, so that's just the context of the height determination. And then very briefly, the the pyrotite content of this seam of 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 rock, I mean, this is the same. Uh, and and actually, I should probably just be quiet, cause I know that the gentleman that has his hand raised is actually a geologist. But the um, the, from my understanding, this is the same seam of of rock that extends all the way into Willington, uh, that has extensive testing that's been done on it by uh the university. I've talked personally with uh the gentleman that conducted that research for a long time on this same bedrock. And it's actually a very anomalous seam of rock for its concentration of this mineral in that it's significantly lower than what is seen in other rock formations around this area. It's significantly lower uh because it actually comes from much deeper in the earth originally than what the other formations in this area are. So that's just anecdotal from from me, just like a little context.
Thank you, Luther.
Yeah, Jeff, if I can add one quick thing. Uh, the fire marshal, when we went through the first set of discussions on this, wrote a letter indicating that there was no uh safety issues from a fire safety uh for thirty-five feet, that they could handle, you know, higher than thirty-five feet. And that letter is in the record of the discussions we had back several months back.
Okay. Um, thank you, Richard. Uh, Steve.
Uh, thanks. I just wanted to make a a slight adjustment. I think I heard a minute ago that um someone said that the rock under the I I D is the same as what's at Buckland Hills and um at Eastbrook Mall, if I recall correctly, and and that's inaccurate. Um, it's actually um quite quite different rock and
I'm at a meeting right now. I think he's just
Nord, thank you. Go ahead.
Just want to say it's 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 actually different rock as and as Luther was just saying. Um, it is, it's it's its own unique seam. That's the the seam of rock that's been implicated in the crumbling foundations all throughout the northeast part of Connecticut. That's all.
And eh eh, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, guard, guard ahead, Steve.
A- a- as as regards the rock, um, the time that I looked at this, at one time, I think prior to the time that I purchased the property, um, I I had a contact at Aggregate Industries and it, I I think we did some core samples in, but we didn't look at the pyrotite. We looked at the the hardness of the rock. And again, maybe Commissioner Petch can can talk about this. But, you know, i- it's not my intention to export any of this rock uh for uh a- a- as an aggregate product, you know, to a concrete plant to to make foundations. But my recollection is with the core samples, and I had the guys out there in the white lab suits with the, doing the whole thing. Uh, that there was about thirty-five to forty feet of overburden, then you hit the rock. And the rock was not quite hard enough uh for the making of asphalt. And I think, uh, again, I let Commissioner Petch uh correct me. But they they performed this test called an L A abrasion test for the purpose of determining how hard the rock is as to whether it can make asphalt that would meet, you know, Connecticut DOT or mass DOT standards. And it was not hard enough. So the rock, the the intention was to possibly bring down the site. But again, I'm not looking to bring down the site. I'm looking to minimize the disturbance at this point. And I'm not gonna export any of the rock um from that site. It it's not going to any concrete pat- batch manufacturer.
Okay. And uh, I just, I just have a couple of comments that come to mind. Steve, thank you for your input. Um, Steve also, Steve and Steve, thank you. Um, but uh, Steve Pesh, um, the issue right now, or one of the issues that came up before, again, not to belabor the rock content, is that it isn't so much its activity, its identified activity and its problems and becoming an aggregate going into uh uh other gravel and foundation manufacturing and stuff too. But what was brought up, and I don't know, cause we haven't had anyone really report or look onto this, is the leaching of material into the water and what the possibility that might involve or the the problems that might involve, which I don't thi, I I have no research. I have no information along those lines. I just know that came up as an issue. Does that remain an issue or does it really an issue that is unresolved in your estimate?
Are you asking me, Steve?
I'm asking you, Steve Pesh. Yes, you're Steve Pesh. Commissioner Pesh.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I I really think, a- as we've been discussing, I think having, um, you know, some funds on the table to do an assessment is really important for this. Um, the leaching is an issue, the um balanced site issue where you have to dig down and build up, you know, that that becomes a a concern as well. So I'd like to see some more information and studies done about this. Um, my point was just to make sure it's clear that the rock under this site is not the same at Buckland Hills or Eastbrook Mall or other places where lives construction is done. It is the rock that is implicated in the crumbling foundations.
Right.
And I'll let other, other studies happen. Um, I'm not a engineer, but I am a uh geologist and geochemist, so.
You're on the fringe. That's okay. Um, my other question uh to Mr. Ralakis, the other Steve. Um, we had a survey that took place. Um, we sent it out to our uh citizens. We had three hundred and eighteen responses back on that survey of it. There was an area for them to write a narrative. A hundred and forty-two people chose to put some type of a narrative in there. And one theme that came up, and I'll just put this out to you, is you've owned this property since two thousand and five approximately. Um, if the town were to make an offer to you for purchasing that land, would you be open to that?
Certainly.
So that was quick, quick and easy. Okay.
Certainly.
I'm not pulling my wallet out. I'm just, you know, finding, you know, what your, uh, you know.
Every, everything is for sale, you know. I know that's an overused term, but the town has an interest in purchasing the property and has some public use in mind, or maybe it wants to. I I know some towns have built their own industrial parks. I I I'd be amenable. I'm not sure what the town has for ARPA funds or anything like that. I know some towns have have used it in that regard. But um, certainly, you know, it's, you know, a- a- as I stated before, I I I've been on uh my own planning board in the town of Shrewsbury since the last century, nineteen ninety-nine. And I know it's difficult to make decisions. Uh, I I recently made a decision that uh uh, I think we probably had more people come out against, you know, for a fifty-unit apartment building in the center of town on three acres than came out against the mega warehouse. And, you know, I've encountered derision, e- et cetera, when I go to Market Basket or other places from people saying, oh, you made the wrong choice or, you know. So I understand it. It it's not easy to make decisions, you know, public surveys. And but you you peop, y- y- you on the commission know that ultimately you are the decision makers. Surveys are nice, but I'm not sure they necessarily reflect the uh views of everybody in town. Uh, they they certainly reflect the views of those activists or those people who, you know, either for or against a a project. Um, and I'm not certainly, I'm not certain that their views are necessarily in the best interests of the town. I'm not sh- I don't know that I understand what the P O C D is when you, when when the commission refers to it or what the, you know, wh- what you're looking for. But, you know, I I think that certainly the bylaw was written uh with an intention that something be developed there. And unfortunately, again, just despite, I I I think what was your best intentions at the time, it do, it doesn't reflect what current market conditions and market demand is. So yes, uh, the property is for sale, but yes, I'd also like to move forward uh with a a uh project in the event that the town uh and I couldn't reach an agreement. I'm always open. I think people have my cell phone number. If they don't, I'll give it to them. I don't care if the people call me. Five oh eight, eight six four, nine five two seven.
Okay.
And I think you have my email.
Yes, me do.
And
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, uh, again, you know, a- and I I don't mean to be a, don't don't take this the wrong way relatively rock or 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 pyrotite. But, you know, un- until you test everybody's wells, it's kind of hard for me to opine or anybody to opine that anything that I do here i- is going to impair the water quality in In Ashford or Willimantic or or anywhere, you know, and I, I I kind of have a hard time. You know, believing that, you know, people are panicking about. Uh, you know, potential people who have concerns at this about this project are panicking. When I would ask, when when's the last time that the Board of Health has tested the septic system at the Ashford Motel? There's probably no answer. And again, I I I think that. I I think your bylaw gives you enough protection. Um, I don't, I don't think there's any need to. Further restrict. In fact, again, not to belabor the point, I I I think you got to expand the uses allowed by special permit. Sorry, I am repeating myself.
Thank you. Jeff, you had something?
Yeah, uh, this question is for you, Jeff. Do we have the results of the survey that went out in the Ashford citizen in the desires of the town?
Those are available. And Mike went over some of that with the last meeting and they are as part of the meeting materials. Both the, uh, uh, individual results, the percentage results for the questions as well as the narratives that people wrote out. And I would ask each and all of commission members to review those. Take a look at them. It's not four hundred and eighty something comments like the hearings, but you know, it's, uh, some more information.
Very good. Thanks, Joe.
Sure, Joe. Richard.
It's all very admirable that would like to turn this into a park. But the, uh, real focus of this one, uh, last undeveloped area. In the town was to develop it such that it would increase the tax base. I I I I'm not, I. I I read through some of the comments. I I didn't go through everyone in 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 excruciating detail. But a lot of people did when asked if they would want to, uh, increase their taxes, you know, uh. With this, they they were not in favor of increasing the taxes. A tax base is high as it is now. If we take increasingly things off the tax base, uh, it does nothing to help us. We've got very little tax base in town.
I I full, I fully understand what you're saying along those lines, a- absolutely. Um, again, having read through it, there were a couple of, you know, interesting things, uh, simple requests, uh. Yeah, there was a, there was a lot of, uh, the similar type of rhetoric. That was shared at the hearings, uh, for the text amendment. However, I think there were a couple of nuggets in there that the commission, uh, can. You know, take under advisement, if you will. And again, I also agree with you that, yes, ten years ago, when this, the P O C D was put together with this area. Uh, it did go to vote. I mean, we don't, we don't do it blindly. We put it out there for a vote and the town passed it as is. Now, now, ten years later, it's a problem. It it never should have gone through ten years ago. Is that, you know, is that what's being said? Um, so I I appreciate your comments on that.
And the town did not vote on it. The the process for approving the P O C D. Is the plan and zoning commission votes on it. And the planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to approve the P O C D.
But we brought it to a hearing.
It was to a public hearing, but there was no town, there was no town vote.
You're right. There there was no town vote, but it did go to a hearing and the input from the hearing did not cause us to really change our. Change what we had in there.
Correct.
Right. Yes, I'm sorry if I misspoke about a a vote. Yes, it was, it was the board doing a vote. But again, we did have a hearing regarding what we had developed and put together. Um, Jeff, is your hand still up or do you have another question?
No, I'm sorry, Jeff. I didn't lower my hand.
That's okay. I'll go to Mark. Mark, go ahead.
Uh, just for clarification, the results of the survey as well as the public comment. Are not under this month's meeting. They're under the January meeting, even though they occurred after the meeting. So if you're looking, if you're looking for those survey results, and if you're looking for the pub- public comment from the survey results. They're under the January meeting tab, not the February.
Thank you.
No, they they were, they were under this one too. They were listed under this one also.
I just looked them up and they were listed under the January.
Yeah, they're on the February twelfth tab.
Yeah, I found him under February as well.
I just went in and.
Fucking line is this.
I don't think it's good. I don't think the people in town, they sort of feel the.
Jeff, Jeff, you're on, you're, uh, you're not on mute. Mark, do you have a listing there that shows like February twelfth and previous meeting? And did you go under February, February twelve?
Oh, no, I found them. That's what I said. I I I I found them under previous meeting.
Oh, because if you go under February twelfth, you'll also find them.
The the summary that Mike put together, it's like six or eight of, uh. PowerPoint slides is is on the, uh. Minutes for this meeting, as is a fourteen page, uh, listing of all the comments.
Right. Janet, you have your hand up.
Yes, this, I, we're, we're digressing wildly here, but.
Sorry.
I have some questions about. The survey. Are we going to discuss that at all?
It in itself is not in the agenda, but, uh, we can probably, um. Deal with that. Excuse me, right here, uh, under our next steps. We can probably talk about that under our next steps. Okay, thank you. So we don't hold people up and what. Um, Mr. Rodolakis, any further comments or anything? We thank you for your time. We thank you for coming out.
My only comments again are, I I really appreciate the commission giving me an opportunity. Um, to discuss, uh. You know, my thoughts relative to development in in the I I D zone. Um, I I think the bylaw needs some tweaking. Uh, I'm not saying you need mega warehouses. But I I I think that you have to take advantage of of the cards you dealt. And in this instance, in the I I D zone, you have the highway. And whether you like it or not, the highway and the interchange are kind of your best assets for development in the I I D zone. Uh, I think that, uh, development can occur there in a responsible, sustainable manner. Um, I think there's an opportunity on certain portions of the site, a portion of the site. To develop something that is smaller than was suggested. Um, less impervious, less earth. Movement of earth. I I think ma- may maybe more visually pleasing or aesthetically pleasing, but. I I I think you you have to open the bylaw to additional uses. Only allowable by special permit and with the guardrails that are provided, a- as Mr. Williams. H- h- had explained in detail relative to the opportunity for peer review and the applicant having to pay for the peer review. Uh, you know, I I know that people are passionate, uh, mainly against and, you know, I'm not saying I don't. Respect the opinions, um, I think a little bit over the top, but, um, again, I I hear them a- as regards. To a a large scale development, although your bylaw does talk about large scale development. I I think we can do something. Smaller. Um, in that zone. And it it would help you. And I I I think when talking, I'd be remiss. When I spoke with the Economic Development Commission, they did mention that at one point. It was suggested that a quarter of one percent of the town of Ashford's. Budget should be devoted towards the purchase or preservation of open space. I don't know whether you do that by way of. Agricultural easements or agricultural restrictions or outright purchases of land, but. You you have a lot of driving through town. I've driven through town. Not as much as the commission members, but I've driven through town. It it is a pretty town when you, when you get over to the other side of, uh, eighty nine. And, uh, it would seem that there would be better areas for preservation than. A piece of land right on the highway next to the Ashford Motel. I could be wrong, but. I I I would think there might be better areas, but maybe you could use, maybe to the extent that. I'm not saying that anything I would put there or anything that could be put there is the economic savior, because it's certainly not going to be. But it could help in that regard relative to the budget, maybe. Maybe that would help the town get to the a quarter of one percent that it hasn't been able to achieve. Over this past several years to 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 buy some other sites that might be considered more pristine. Than this. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I guess I don't see any other hands, so I'm guessing the, uh, members are, uh, complete with their questions and, uh. Information gathering. So, uh, again, thank you, members. Thank you for, uh, your attention. Thank you for, uh, your questions. Moving on to item B under new business, again, the I D zone, next steps. Mike, uh, you with us?
I am.
You are. Uh, I know we, and I I know Janet just, uh, you know, referenced the survey and you were, you. Presented us with the information regarding the, uh. Results of the questions themselves last time around. And, uh, you were working on the narratives and you were able to put those together. Um, is there anything that you want to share for a summary or an update on that? Again, I know I'm putting you on the spot.
No, uh, the. The PowerPoint was just screenshots from the survey itself. I didn't do anything to, you know, those were just copy paste and then I just pulled the narrative, so. Everything, all the results and everything received is is online and nothing was. Synthesized in any way. So what you see is what came directly from those who took the survey.
Janet, did you have any comment or anything regarding, uh? You know.
Yeah, yes. If we went over this before, I apologize. But the last page of the survey results. That is the future projects. Um, Mike, could you explain what that, how, what that graph means? Because I I don't understand it.
Hold on one second. Let me pull that.
I think Luther, I think Luther had a question on that too, the last time also. For Mark.
Well, I still don't understand.
Okay to bring it up.
As the commission considers future projects.
It's the last, um, page with the graph.
Is it future projects or is it, um, how, uh?
Please list.
Port to you.
Potential impacts.
Impacts.
Well, in order of most important.
So the the basically what they needed to do was was. Provide the weight for what they. Felt to be most important and to least important based upon the, um, choices. So number six, the the, um, preservation of existing landscapes.
Are you, are you able to share it all?
Yeah, share the screen. Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
And Mike, while you're pulling that up, I'll I'll just clarify. I I did have a question about this at the last meeting. And my question was, there appears to be a typo in that. The language is stating that six is the least important and one is the most important. And in our dialogue, we were discussing it as six being the most important and one being the least important. And that was my question, and I don't know that we ever resolved it.
Please put the potential effects below in order for most important consideration. One is the most important, six is the least important.
I think what Luther is saying is correct. It's it's backwards.
And and I don't know if it's backwards. I was looking for clarification to call back to the survey. To verify, is it correct? Is it not correct?
I'm gonna, I'm just pulling up the actual survey to see if I can flip the graph. To show it. Because it gives the percentages in basically a table, um, but I. It's, it's not something that's easily shown. So one. Being the most important, six being the least important, so I can. I go, I can give you the average score of each one, the average weight. Or I can potentially pull out. I'm just not sure I can share it, but I can show you, like, well, let's start with that. So the average weight being. Most in, one being most important, six being least important. So the average score of grand list growth was three point three. The average gr- uh, score for traffic was four point six. Job creation, two point nine. Preservation of existing landscapes, dark skies, et cetera, five point eight. Impervious coverage, surface drainage, four point two, water consumption, three point eight, and services to residents, three point two.
Okay, so this is accurately reflected. It just is somewhat contrary to what I was expecting. Having read the other survey results is that preserving the existing landscape is the least important thing to the people taking the survey.
I think it's. This is showing, this is, this is showing the rankings, right? So they. I guess the, so sixty percent of of people chose. Preservation of existing landscapes as the most important. Hundred and ninety one people said preserving landscapes was. Num- option number one, most important. Four percent.
Okay, so then just your your text ranking just needs to be. Fl- flipped. So where you have it saying one equals most important, that should actually read one equals least important.
Well, this come, this is a, this graphic came right out of Survey Monkey, so I didn't draft this. This is as it was presented. The, I think it's just that the way that they're showing, the way the graph is showing, it's it's sort of counterintuitive, but I didn't. This is how it was presented and how they answered the questions.
So so what you're saying, Mike, is that all those people, let's put it this way, those hundred, I'm sorry, was it ninety one, hundred nine, what was it, hundred ninety one?
Hundred and ninety one, yes.
Hundred and ninety one ones. Gave it the weight that it did on the graph.
Right.
So I I think, okay, this may help. So what we're looking at is the reflection of how many people voted one and how many people voted six. But the numbers represented by the bars have nothing at all to do with that one and six scale. It's just an a- aggregate representation of the number of votes each category got.
Could I speak? Could I speak?
Sure, sure, Valerie.
Well, it seems to me that the six is six percent of the people taking the survey. That's, that's over fifty percent, whereas only three percent of the people taking the survey. Said potential services to or for residents. So I think the column on the left. Needs to be clarified that it's percentages of people taking the survey.
Yeah, you're absolutely right that that's sixty percent equals one ninety one. So as opposed to a six, it actually should be that. Axis should probably really be a percent. And I think even Mike just described it as sixty percent of the people indicated a one import.
Can can you see?
I think that was six, not sixty.
It's a six, it shouldn't be a sixty percent is what it is.
So I, you know, I don't understand how they're coming up with the score here on this.
Yeah, this makes a lot of sense. Yeah, this is a great sheet.
But that, but that doesn't hold for the Oh, there's a score way over to the left. That's right, way over to the right.
Yep.
But what is that score? I don't understand what that score means in relationship to how people rated these.
So the numbers across the top, Janet. It's taking sixty percent at number one, thirteen percent at number two, five percent at number three, and it's giving us the mean value of all the scores across all the potential numeric values. So out of everyone that voted, the average ranking was five point eight four. So sixty percent said number one, thirteen percent said number two, five percent said number three. So the aggregate average score of importance for preservation was a five point eight four out of a potential seven.
That makes sense.
Okay, that, yeah, okay, that makes sense. So so this graph needs explanation.
It should actually had the the scale on that bar graph should stop at seven instead of going higher. And and it should just be labeled as as, you know, the higher the number, the more important it is. And it should just be a scale of zero to seven. Or one to seven, rather.
Yeah, I I these, I mean, I can try to redo the graph manually. These are just the
Yeah, it's the export that they, yeah, it's the export they gave you, but the export they provided us was not the cleanest.
Well, I think this page is important to have.
This is a great page.
Yeah, that's a good page to have.
I realize I'm sounding like a never ending comment. When you ask a question without an implication. Oh, would I love to to preserve the landscape, you know, fine. But but would you like to do that and increase your taxes twenty-five percent in to to do that? You know, that that's, those two things kind of go hand in glove. So asking these things is isolated questions. Really gives misleading results. Because, you know, the real issue, if if I take the comment that Jeff made earlier. Oh, what if the town buys this property? It takes it off the tax. You know, rolls and without having a any difference within the town, we're going to be faced with increasing taxes. I mean, we'll only have so so many things to tax in town. Our biggest taxpayer in town is is Eversource. Because of the, of the electric light poles. We we don't really have any large tax base. You know, to pay our taxes other than residential property taxes. And the whole idea was when this P O C D was done and this whole thing was done, was to try to find a way to do development that would increase the tax base. That was the whole premise behind this whole thing at at the get go.
Wow, that's a mess. I like the chart better. Uh, Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Williams has a really important point there because context is super important. We could also phrase, if questions are, would you like to reduce your taxes? We should inform it, like, would you like to reduce your taxes and have your drinking water polluted? Also play a role there. So I think context is always really important.
Janet, your hand's up.
Yes, yeah. Oh, I'm not even muted. Um, yeah, in 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 response to Dick, I I would like to say it it's not always a zero sum game. So i- if you're, you know, I read through all the comments on that people sent. Some people want development, but they want to protect the environment. So it it's not that you necessarily have to have one or the other. Um, I would also point out, I I did a rough count and it's can be somewhat subjective. But of the hundred and forty-three comments, sixty-nine said they wanted smaller building size than what we have. Fifteen said they wanted more business. But I I I think as a commission, it's our job to weigh both sides and come up with with a a good middle ground and and not think that it has to be, oh, this or that only. I would also like to comment, Mr. Chair, that in the future, if we have surveys that any derogatory references to the commission members should not be published.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll I'll second that one since my name is coming up in a negative context in multiple places, even including people knocking on my front door.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Luther.
Thanks, Jeff. So I I totally understand and and in 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 many ways, support what Dick is talking about with being cautious about town-acquired lands. You know, the the town recently acquired three hundred and something acres on Route forty-four that we don't have a clear path for forward with. I don't know that acquiring another ninety-something acres of contentious property is in the town's best interest, but I understand it's just it's good to know whether we could do those things or not. But also, I think it's also important to understand on this survey. Um, you know, Dick said the the and and people have more than just Dick, people have said it's important to have questions that are that are contextual and scaled. And that particular question that we were all just looking at and talking about actually was a scaled response in that you had a, you know, a set number of variables and you had a set number of rankings to associate with them. So you did have to make preferential judgment on this is more important than that. So it was a ranked question. It wasn't just a question that is purely arbitrary, that, oh, yeah, I'd love to have that and I'd love to have that. You did have to rank what's most important to you. So I think those types of questions are great questions.
Yeah, it definitely wasn't. It wasn't a one and done. It wasn't, you know, one or the other.
Yeah, you got you've got to prioritize your, what's important to you. And I think those questions are telling.
Which I, which I think was the goal of the question overall. Thank you. Okay, um. Mike, we talked about posting these. Besides on the website, I'm sorry, Nord hands up. Go ahead, Nord. I'm sorry. You're on mute. You're on mute. There you go.
Uh, I just want to point out to the commission that Joshua's, I'm a steward for Joshua's Trust Land Preservation. And they, they are preserving substantial acreage in the town of Ashford. So it's not like we don't have that. We do have a lot of preserved pristine, beautiful areas that Joshua's Trust is preserving. Now, there's another, another big uh, land acreage that we have that we don't know what to do with, and that's the wagon shed property. And that hasn't been mentioned, but that's a similar issue to this. Except I think we own the wagon shed already. Property.
Correct. Yes, that's what Luther just alluded to, that we have the large area off of forty-four that is being, you know, and it's I don't want to call it's final stages, but it's being reviewed at the selectance level for potential uses. And they've had a number of inputs from various sources on that.
But Joshua's Trust property in land preservation is probably in the hundreds of acres, hundreds of acres, multiple.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just speak momentarily to Joshua's Trust March?
Go ahead, Mark.
And that when Joshua's Trust takes on a piece of property, it's not in, it's not preservation in the perpetuity. They retain the right to sell that, you know, to sell that property in order to use the proceeds. You know, to buy other properties. So there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee that a Joshua Trust property is preserved in perpetuity. In fact, there's a property that we're looking at in town to purchase from Joshua's Trust, so.
Didn't know that. Thank you. Okay, um. Mike, please remind me, did we have any other plans for publishing or presenting this to the public?
Wait, so it's linked through the agenda and posted online? I I don't know, I mean, can I can try to link it just through the town's website? And so it's available there. The I I D survey was advertised there, so I can, I can link it that way if you if you want.
Do you think? There's some methodology for us to look at those hundred and forty-two responses and maybe categorize them. And then possibly do a one page in the citizen with the slides and the kind of a breakdown of the responses, the narratives.
We could try, you know, the one thing that I would just want to figure out the way through that is how we would categorize because I don't want anybody, I mean, we we had comments during the I I D survey about people feeling like their comments were going to be changed or modified or altered in some way. And so I don't want to I don't want to be the lightning rod for that, but I'm certainly happy to assist with the labor.
Or we or we can, again, we could just, we could just put the results of the survey in the questions and then uh, indicate people to see the full narratives. They can go online and see those. Something along those lines and direct them to the site, the link. We'll talk more on that. Actually, I'll I'll take input from the group here. Luther, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Jeff, thanks. I was just gonna sort of second the caution that Mike was recommending is I would be very cautious about trying to summarize or categorize people's uh, free form written commentary, because I I think people are reasonably passionate about this subject in town and and may take offense at being categorized or 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 feel that they're being uh, muted in some fashion to not have the full extent of their comment made available.
Yeah, and I think I think I think Mike represented that also. So, um, but it's just not, we we have really no other way than online and people who want to address this, you know, they can look it up. Uh, we could always have printouts of the narratives available in the land office also for those people that are not computer savvy or have access to that.
And 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 just as a very, very brief follow up to that, Jeff, I I also am not entirely clear on um, what our obligation is to publish the results of this survey at all. If if this was a survey meant to inform the commission as it tries to pursue its work. Um, you know, making it available for people that really want to hunt it down is great, but are we obligated to to publish the the findings of this survey, uh, word for word in a in a publication?
Well, I'm just trying to get it out as opposed to electronically is really my goal on this for those people who don't who aren't into links, who aren't into going through their computer to do this and prefer a a piece of paper that they can access. And I get two sides of the story. I heard someone complaining to me the other day, the number of citizens sitting at the post office that don't get taken by uh, the the postal boxes or the people there, they just sit and get thrown out. And then we've got the other side of people who live and breathe by the Ashford citizen. So, um, it's it's, I don't want to call it divisive, I just want to, I'm trying to get as many people to see the information as possible. Richard.
Yeah. It physically is available for anyone that wants to go on to look at the minutes of the planning zoning commission, simply clicking on the link gives access to this. I think that satisfies our need to share this with the public. Trying to to put this into a summary opens it us up to in a prejudiced way summarizing it. And I think that would be wrong. So I think simply leaving it as it is now with no other summary available is probably the best way to deal with it. This is the first time and I've been I have to come back, I've been on planning and zoning commission for, I believe, twelve, fourteen years. And I've never seen a survey such as this ever done for any regulation for planning and zoning ever in the past. The commission members were elected basically to represent the town. And and you have public hearings where the what the commission wants to do and not wants to do is put forth. But I've never seen surveys where it it's given the impression to the town that they have a vote on what the commission does or does not do. And I think that is open up a can of worms.
Well, that's one man's opinion. I tend to disagree on that because we do operate in a transparent and we also need to gain information as to what our constituents want to have. I mean, being voted in is one thing, but not listening to what the wants and needs of the people are is, I think short sighted. Janet, what did you say?
I I was just, I was going to say that exact thing. I I think we we are elected, we are elected to represent people in town and and use our own good judgment, but I I think it's definitely a good idea to hear what people have to say on important issues. And and they can't vote on the final. People are frustrated. They can't vote on the on the final regulations. But I think they definitely should have a voice in in the discussion.
And and my comment is that it's okay to have the the expression of feelings of what they think is important. But I think it's it's dangerous to give the impression to people that they are voting on what the regulations should be. It it's advisory to the commission. It's not a vote by the town.
Right, right, absolutely.
So I I think leaving the accessibility the way it is right now, I think is the best way to leave it. To try to summarize it in the document published either online or in the citizen is potentially putting putting prejudice on on whatever was or was not said.
Well, I think and I think it opens us up to undo, as you know, others have stated, whether we box people in or we've revised or we have limited their information. If it's available to them electronically, then I I I'm happy to go with what the commission is saying here, so. Okay, um, and this was where we were talking about consideration of extension of the temporary moratorium uh, under the I I D next steps. Uh, Mike, what do we may this comes to?
Right. Yep. So you'd have to basically have the amendments that would, if if you decided there were amendments that were necessary or or whatever changes, any text amendments that you felt were necessary to the I I D would have to be completely drafted and filed with CROG, Town, et cetera, you know, effectively the end of of March, because I need the end of, of March, because I need thirty-five days to allow for that agency comment ahead of the May deadline. So based upon where things stand now, I, I thought it was important to include that because the commission either has to be laser focused with how they wanna adjust this between now and March, or we need to consider extending the moratorium, or I mean, the other issue or option is the moratorium expires and all that means is, is it goes to back to the regulation, the way that it's currently drafted. Which, as we've talked about, has been on the books for many, many years and, and is lacks operation for certain types of development. The only thing I'll mention since I, I am speaking is that um, moratoria have to be temporary in nature, they can't exist for an undefined amount of time. So if the commission is interested in extending the moratorium, they have to be, uh, in agreement for how long it would be extended for, and the duration has to be there has to be a nexus between the duration and the purpose. So if we need an extra three months or four months to extend it, we can, but we've gotta be able to justify that time with what the commission intends to do. So if there's if there is no plan to make amendments to the regulation, we can't keep the moratorium in place simply as a temporary hold or block on development. It has to be for the purposes of establishing a regulation. Um, that's pretty clear in the way that moratoria are established and what has and has not been upheld. So we would need to decide the duration of the extension, if that's what the commission wants, and make sure the purpose agrees with that.
Thank you for that, Mike, appreciate that. Uh, Richard?
If, unless I've missed something, I don't see there is any, uh, committee or group of people charged with modifying these regulations. At this point in time. Is there?
I think I'm looking at them.
I think it's our whole com- commission.
But, there's, there's no one that's changing anything, so we've got a moratorium. But we've got no group of people working on changes to the regulations.
Well, we've been gaining information regarding this area. I mean, we've talked to, we've had, uh, you know, the, uh, Charles Viddit come in and speak to us the last time around. We've had the landowners come in to find information. We've got a survey that we've done. I mean, we're, we're gathering information right now. The fact that no one's putting pen to paper does not limit the fact that we're not actively working on this.
Okay. So what group of people within planning and zoning are working on considering changes? It's, is it the whole commission?
We haven't reached that point and, and it would be the whole commission, right? Aren't we supposed to do that as a commission? I, I, I know how it's been done, but I believe the correct way to do it is inclusively.
Yeah. What has been done in the past, and I can only speak with what I've been involved in. I did not write things by myself. There was a subcommittee that met every week or two that worked on changes. Different people had a different assignments. We looked at them, we talked about them, and then we came back to the committee and then we presented them to the committee. And the committee had a chance to comment upon them in, 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 in you know, as, as the committee, but the committee as a group of twelve or so people weren't working on doing something on their own. It was a smaller group of people that worked in a more concerted fashion to try to make the changes. And, and Luther, you had, as you indicated, you had chances to make comments. You weren't on the working committees, as I recall. But Janet was on, uh, A- Alex was on, uh, losing track of everyone that was on, but we had about a half a dozen people that were on this small working committee that were doing these things. And someone, I would recommend that some subset of the committee be charged with coming up with recommendations for what we should be changed and then bringing that back to the full committee as opposed to us all discussing this like we are tonight.
Can I jump in, Jeff?
Please, Mike.
So I know that it's, it's not what Ashford is used to, but the dynamic that I have with every other commission I've worked with in my career is commission has a discussion about what they're comfortable with, what they like to see, what they like the regulation to achieve that it doesn't, or what they think need to be removed, and then, and then I would typically put some revisions together for them to consider, and we would work through this iterative process where we have some red lines and, you know, you'd say sort of the Goldilocks syndrome, that's too hot, that's too cold, and, and we would revise with the group. We can certainly do that with, with some type of a subcommittee. And I'm not trying to take this out of the commission's hands, but, um, zoning regulations are something that I'm very familiar with writing and, and have done in dozens of the town, so. If you are comfortable as a group with what you want the regulation to achieve, I'm comfortable that I can put together texts that will get the regulation to that place. And the purpose of the survey, the, the reason we asked the questions and the way that we did is we are trying to get to the issues that were at hand with the previous applications, right? Building size, total lot development, height, um, and review criteria, right? So, so the idea was to take the comments from the survey, the comments from the, the applications, the existing issues with the regulations and the amendments that have been proposed to the IID and try to draw some of those conclusions. So if we start to talk about height and the commission says, you know, we really think we wanna pump it up a little bit, but we don't wanna go to here, then I can work to amend that. If we wanna talk about a modifying special permit criteria to increase the bar for what an applicant needs to satisfy to demonstrate they've, they've designed and submitted an application in, in an appropriate way, then I'll work to, to, to real, to, uh, make changes to those sections, so. Um, it can certainly go that way. You guys don't have to do it that way, but again, I'm offering my labor.
Yeah, Mike, I, I think your labor is, is, uh, definitely needed in this process. But I think that someone from the commission and a small group of the commission needs to lead this with you supporting them, not you leading it on your own. Uh, if I look at what was done in the past, not to say that was the right way to do it, that it was just the way we did it. There was a extremely productive person from NICOG that was at every one of the meetings, and that person, uh, produced a lot of the verbiage that everyone, uh, gave input to. But it was the, uh, input from the subcommittee of the commission that drove what was done by NICOG, not put, not having NICOG leading the whole thing from the get-go, which I think-
Dick, NICOG was involved in the P O C D. We're not talking P O C D right now, we're talking about the IID with the regs. And when it came to the regs that were rewritten in two thousand fourteen, it was NICOG and, uh, Dory Famaglatti that was working with us, and they would meet with the entire commission. They wouldn't meet with a subsection of the commission. The entire commission would give them, very similar to what Mike has described. What we have now available to us, we don't just have a zoning enforcement officer. We have a planning and development contract with Taike. And I would take their, I would, I would take their experience around the state, their input, their comparison to other towns and information over a vast majority of what we have as a commission here right now to help us along. We know what we want for Ashford, as Janet had said, we're representing what the people want in Ashford. But to have that go and meet, um, requirements of the state statutes to meet the, uh, you know, similar, why reinvent the wheel if Taike hasn't experienced with that or anything, and they can offer up along those lines? I, I, I don't think we need a subset, and I think this open, this large group. Um, as we've already discussed, Mark brought up the thing about maybe it's the height we need to work on, and you know, Mike alluded to that. Um, you know, maybe, and I, I think there's a lot of input that's gained, not just having multiple steps and a small group of people, you know, bringing this together and trying to put this together. If we're able to use Taike and their experience, I think we're well ahead of the game.
I, I, I'm all for using Mike and his group, okay? However, I, I think that the process needs to be driven, and I'll use as an example, if it didn't come to the fruition we had hoped it would come, but this whole issue of, uh, small rentals within the lake communities, which Janet was involved in and Mark was involved in. And we met, uh, i- i- as a group talking about that, and then we used, uh, NICOG as a resource, you know, to what we were doing at that point in time. Now, it didn't come through the way we had hoped it would come through, but there was a small working group that did that. You know, if you wanna subcontract this out to, to Mike and his group, that's fine, but I think that the commission is losing a chance to, uh, to have, you know, a, a smaller group of the commission working on behalf of the commission on, on doing this, you know?
Janet, go ahead. Hang on, Luther.
Yep.
Oh, sorry Luther, um. Just, I was gonna say, um, I, I understand what Dick is saying, and I, 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 I know that sometimes a smaller group is more efficient. But I think that we have, um, such a, a wide variety of experience and opinions in our commission that it's very valuable for all of us to work together, um, to hash things out. And, and, um, I think with, uh, uh, Mike Tomato's, um, assistance, um, we don't have to come up with the verbiage, but like he said, we, we can tell him what we want it to be, and he can figure out how to write that up. Um, I think that's a, a very efficient way to work.
Luther, you were gonna say?
Yeah, Janet really well said. I, I couldn't agree more. I think there's nothing worse than saying, well, we've always done it this way, so we have to do it this way. I, I think we have to be open to change, we have to be open to doing it better, and we have to be open to doing it collectively. The whole point of a commission like this is to get collective wisdom together, do things together, not do it as breakoffs and subsets and lobby for it within the group, but to do it very open, very transparently as a collective group, leveraging the resources that we're paying for and experts that we're bringing in to facilitate us doing this well. I completely endorse Jeff's notion, uh, and Mike's notion of let's work together as a group, leveraging Tai Chi and move forward.
Janet, hand up now.
Again, um, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the, uh, moratorium for six months to give us time to rewrite the, um, regulations.
Is there a second? I would second.
Can I just clarify, this motion would be sort of to set the direction of the commission, and then I will do the necessary documents and amendments so that we would schedule a hearing, um, shooting for March if we have the time. If not, it would be for April, but this has to be treated just like a text amendment, um, so we would have to go through that process, assuming the commission agrees on extending or not.
Okay. Any further discussion? Luther?
Yeah, um, so I do have a question regarding the moratorium and, and, um, you know, commission members may remember when, when the moratorium was set. I, I had some questions as to its need then, and I'm still not entirely certain the extent of the need for a moratorium to execute the work that we're trying to do and, and, and the need therein for an extension. I'm not, I'm not speaking for or opposed of of the moratorium extension. My question really is we have a set of permitted, specially permitted and permitted uses for the zone. And my understanding was this moratorium was proposed to forestall application for text amendments that would be similar to what we just went through, uh, as a commission. It's also my understanding that those same text amendments can't be applied for, for a year, and that if the use is not permitted and the text amendment can't be submitted for a year, then I, I don't understand why we have the moratorium in place.
Jeff, I'd like to reinforce that point. We do not need a moratorium to modify the, uh, regulations. We can go forward and change the regulations without a moratorium. I, I don't think a moratorium is of any interest right now. It, it's just, uh, you know, I, I, I can't see a purpose for it. We can still go forward and do everything we're talking about doing without a moratorium.
Mark?
I, I, I agree with Dick. I, 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 I don't understand the need for the moratorium. Um, you know, I, I agree. I think we can go ahead and make changes like we have in the past without the necessity of, uh, a moratorium.
Uh, Nord?
Uh, seems to me that continuing this moratorium would be unfair to the landowner flagrantly. We spent a lot of time crafting the limitations for the IID zone. And we spent a lot of time considering all those limitations, and so far they've been working. Any, any changes to the regs that we crafted at that time would, would probably be minor changes.
Thank you. Janet?
Um, well, I, I recommend a moratorium because I, I think the regs are not sufficient um, for the area and somebody might come up with a, a plan and, and, um, if we don't have enough protections, you know, sometimes you, you have to vote on what you have, not what you want, what you'd like to have. And it, it just gives us the, um, it gives us the space without worrying about somebody coming up with something, that's all.
I, I fully understand what you're saying, and that's really what I have crawling around in the back of my mind, is that, you know, even though, uh, and whether, you know, I guess it takes a little more scrutiny as to whether it's the same group coming to us or the same group coming to us with the same request. Um, it doesn't take much to change some of the verbiage to make it a different request, uh, for a text amendment that would require us to, um, review, would require us to have hearings, would take away time from the commission from getting our work done to try and get this moratorium, or try and get this information changed. And, uh, Luther, go ahead.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, uh, I would, I would, you know, this is not, um, empirical, this is anecdotal, but you know, I have people that I speak with in the development and real estate world that- people that I speak with in the development and real estate world that work in this area quite a bit, and their perspective is that Ashford is going to be hard pressed to see any applications for any development for anything for quite some time because the tone that was set with with turning down the text amendment application that we've just reviewed is such that most developers are not going to have any interest in putting money and time into trying to pursue something in Ashford for for anything really. So I I think our our potential is maybe overstated as to what we're going to be seeing coming through because the the perception in the industry is that we're just not looking to accept applications.
And I also understand the middle of Mr. As most of the role, like I said, indicated, you know, he doesn't have people beating down his door um at this point for uh development and such. Uh, normally I wouldn't take this. This is not part of our meeting, but you've been a very valuable uh input. I'll Mr. Rotalakis, please, go ahead.
A- as a practical matter, I I'm not gonna be submitting anything, you know, spending any time, energy or resources. So i- it if it delays people's concerns, it it's my rights you're kind of trampling on. I'm okay with a six-month extension.
Oh, you're, oh, you got to play best of both worlds on that statement. We have no reason to, you gave us no reason to do it and then didn't have a problem if we did. Um, so to that end, um Janet, unless you want to uh pull back your motion, uh, we will take a vote on the motion on the floor.
Um, we can vote on it, I think.
Okay, very good. So the motion on the floor is to extend the moratorium for six months, which would take us to uh May, June, July, August, September, October, November, approximately November uh time period of two thousand twenty-four. Um, all those in favor of the moratorium, please uh respond. I'd like to respond by hand. I get a hand count here. So uh or I'll I'll just poll. Uh, Mark?
No.
Janet?
Yes.
Nord?
No.
Uh, the 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 Richard?
No.
Jeff? Jeff?
Jeff, unmute yourself.
Tom? Couldn't hear you, Tom, if you said something. Get a little feedback, that's all I'm hearing. Luther?
Uh, no.
Jeff, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, Tom.
I said no.
Okay, thank you. And uh Steve?
I say no.
No. Okay, I myself I'll vote yes since I second it. Um, so the motion uh does not pass. Um, so we will not, it does not pass one, two, three, four, five, six to two. So, um we will not be extending the moratorium. We'll just be living off of what we have for our uh limitations and our um uh special permitting and such for the current IID zone. Okay, um. Moving on from there, we're going to move on from that point if everyone's comfortable with that unless there's any other discussion. Okay, uh, just a quick thing on future meeting format. Uh, I do know I sat in on a um uh session for the selectmen and they did a hybrid meeting. Uh, they've been doing some hybrid meetings there. Um, Mike, I don't know if you've had any recent discussion with uh the Selectman's Office?
Yeah, I um sent over all the information that we had put together with the towns um IT folks maybe several months ago. Um, so I sent it all up so that they could take a look at it and see kind of what would be necessary. They, I reviewed it once the information was provided just to see if it would be appropriate for basically what the town would need, having done this in other places, but it'll be up to the Selectman's Office to actually decide if that's, you know, something they want to execute and expenditure the funds and all of those things. Um. The the key point is, again, trying to implement the technology in that large meeting room in the basement of the town hall so that as required by statute, if we have a hybrid meeting, those attending virtually have the ability to see in real time everything that's being presented just like those in the room. And so while that works, if we have all the information and I can share my screen and and, you know, applicants can share their screen, that works well, but, you know, for public hearings and items where members of the public may be in the room and want to present information, we need to be able to get that information presented in a way that members of the public or members of the commission that are attending virtually can also see that. So if someone presents pictures that they took, I need to make sure that I can get the pictures put together in such a way that people attending remotely can see them just like those in the room. Um, that's the requirement to the statute, and this group, I think, is probably a little bit different than most of the other boards and commissions in that, you know, like the Board of Finance doesn't have materials presented, you know, to them for review in the same way. Um. So it's it's not a lot of equipment. It's not overly expensive, so hopefully it can be done pretty.
But it is, it is a matter of uh a further uh materials needed to be able to have that information available to both the hybrid and the in-person.
Right now, yeah, right now, the only option for hybrid is using the owl. Um, and that works, but it but it doesn't provide that full scope of of what would would really be in the spirit of the way the statute was written. We tried to use the owl when we dealt with this large application in Wellington, and it did not suffice. The microphone only captures audio within six feet. It does not focus on what you'd wanted to focus on. It chooses what you want it to focus on, although you can play with that a little bit. You can't connect it to to audio and recordings, so um we ended up having to buy a lot of other equipment to make that work. So we're trying to solve those problems upfront.
Okay. Mark, you have your hand up?
Um, I I brought this up several meetings ago. The stat- the statute only covers commission members. It doesn't cover the general public. We ha- we ha- if we decide to do a meeting in person, we have to have we have to have a remote option for a commission member, not for the general public.
I I think what Mike is talking about when it comes to the information, sharing the information, it is when we have someone who's virtual and someone who's live and presenting to the in-person group. We have to have, based on the statute, that we have to be able to have that information available to um the virtual people also.
No, o- only the commission members. So if if the public wants to.
Not access the the information that's being presented at the meeting for FOI.
The 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 virtual is for the commission members, not for the general public. If the general public wants to attend an in-person meeting, they can int- attend the in-person meeting. We don't have to make accommodations for anyone who wants to attend a meeting virtually who's not a commission member.
Those accommodations were accessed to it. It's not a matter of the information that's being, but once you go into a hybrid meeting.
I I do, I deal with it in the state all the time.
What do you mean you deal with it with the state all the time?
With virtual, i- if we have an in-person meeting, it's an in-person meeting. We don't have to jump through hoops to give full access to someone who wants to attend this meeting remotely, in unless they're they're on the board that's meeting. The board members, yes, not not attendees.
But you're saying having, but you're saying having not a hybrid meeting. You're saying having a in-person meetings.
Correct. An in-person meeting, the general public has to attend the in-person meeting. We don't have to make a ti- accommodations. If a commission member, though, wants to attend remotely, that's where we have to make accommodations.
I I I understand what you're saying now, but the thing is, I am very much still inclined.
Fine, I'm just saying, but that's, but 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 it was mentioned that it's statute. That is not.
So if I could clarify.
Choice.
Mike, go ahead, please.
Statute requires that the technology be capable of conveying information presented to the come during the meeting in a if in a document form, et cetera. They need to, those attending remotely need to be able to see, hear, listen, participate in real time as if they are physically in the room. So if someone, if we have a all but one member of the commission in the room and someone from the commission is attending virtually, I need the same technology as if I'm trying to make that information available to the public. You're correct that only commission members can petition for a a virtual component to the meeting. But I need the technology to be able to do the same things because if you're from home.
You know, I I I agree. I understand that, but but you said it's statutory. That that portion is not, the public portion is not statutory. I understand you need the same equipment to give access to a commission member, but that's a different.
The statute requires the type, the technology provide all of those things. The statute allows for the commission to petition for a virtual component. The the public cannot petition for a virtual accommodation, but for per FOI, I need to make sure because, again, we're recording all of these public hearings. We're required to retain the recordings. I still need to check all of those boxes, so um and and to be honest, I've not been in a situation where it's where I've specifically asked the question. But I think that once you have a virtual component for the commission, you need to provide that same level of access to members of the public. I don't know that we could bar them from attending. I I haven't been in that boat, but in the conversations that we've had in the town hall by both the previous and current first selectmen, it's always been conveyed to me that we would not deviate from providing at least what we're providing now. So the plan that we have put together assumes that we'll provide access once we go to an in-person component for everybody to attend virtually because they've been doing so. So that's how we reviewed that with Savage, but um that's a decision for someone other than me.
Thank you, Mike. Richard?
Yeah, the uh if I look back to some of the meetings we've been having lately, uh, we've had substantial a number of community participants. Uh, and and this is kind of going along with some of the things that you were saying earlier about, you know, getting uh input from the public. The number that sticks in my head was one of the meetings we had had two hundred and seventy-six participants. You couldn't have two hundred and seventy-six participants uh in the town hall. I think keeping what we're doing in light of the fact that there is a lot of community interest in what we're discussing, uh, keeping it on Zoom and and allowing the community to participate as they are tonight is probably the best way to go forward.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I I I agree with you in that part. We've had some commission members who have expressed wanting to meet personally, meet in person. And what that leads to is the implementation in order to get, as you just said, get the information out, get the information in from the community. Uh, the best way for us to do that, along with, you know, how many people we can fit in a room at two hundred and fifty-six for a hearing or whatever, is to have it virtually. However, the the middle road is the hybrid meeting. Again, the hybrid allows us to have the virtual contact with the community and an in-person meeting, similar to what Mike referred to when uh uh Wellington was going through the uh potential site off of thirty-two there, off of the highway and off of Route thirty-two, and they had, I don't know, three meetings of a hundred and fifty people online with a hundred and fifty people sitting in the bleachers at their school. Uh, but they had their members, for the most part, uh, maybe not all of them, but they had most of the members of the commission sitting in person at the meeting. Um, if it's something that the group doesn't want to explore, if they've gone back on that, not wanting to meet in person until the technology is really put together, again, um, it's been done. It's just it's more difficult, and as Mike says, you know, we need to be able to share that information. All the information from FOI needs to be shared, both virtually and in person. If the commission is not hell-bent on coming together as a group, we will continue doing virtually. I was just trying to meet some of the needs as expressed to me by some of the commission members.
Yeah, and Jeff, and and this is more of a personal thing. Uh, I am fighting with trying to recover from uh a failed back surgery. Uh, I am not that able to uh get around on my own. Uh, so being able to meet like we're meeting tonight allows me to participate much more than I would be able to otherwise. Uh, so I would, at the very least, want to be able to do things virtually uh so I could participate in the commission because I can do it perfectly well, sitting in my office chair here. But I I can't do it uh driving down to the town hall and sitting in a chair in in the town hall.
Yes, thank you, Dick. Um, okay, no decision had to be made. The only thing I was reaching out for was to get, you know, the preferences of the commission, letting know of any limitations, Mike giving us an update on the um uh technology and the limitations we're seeing there. Uh, if we were to move to this, it would be in the spring, maybe the April, May meeting. Uh, I put it out there, food for thought. Think about the limitations and hopefully we'll get an update also as to what we have available to us for technology by then. Uh, but I'm willing to go through the training process. Um uh Janet is vice chair. We'll make sure she goes through the training process so that we as she rolls her eyes, so that uh there's no limitation there, and we know how to handle a meeting and meet all the state statute requirements. So no decision needs to be made unless there's any input. Again, you know, Dick has given his preference. Does anyone else have a uh a strong preference they want to share?
I think um, I think um it's important to have the hybrid option for people. Um. You know, there's still illnesses out there and people have different preferences and I think as as we, Dick mentioned, with large when we have a large number of the public joining us, they're not going to fit in any room in the bill, in the town, so we need to be able to to um deal with with uh online people as well, and I would like to see everyone in person. It would be nice.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your put. Uh, Mike zoning uh after report?
Um, so I am working with uh Ken on a a potential alternative approach to some sticky enforcement that we've been talking about about a particular property in town. Um, delivery of notice has been a challenge because the the um property owner does not live in town, does not live in the state, and we're obligated to provide notice of enforcement to the listed address of record. Um, and and we're not able to do some of the more traditional things like marsh delivery because it's a different state. Um, so we're working on an alternative which which we think will work with that. Um, working still with Permit Link to get all of the commission applications online to the permit portal so that they'll be more easily submitted, but also accessible. submitted, but also accessible because the portal is searchable to anybody online without an account. So once we start capturing things there, anybody can look them up and see everything, all the documents, the applicant. So trying to get that squared away. I submitted all the recent text amendments and updates that we've made um to general code, which is the town's um online code provider, so that those updates will be codified into the regulations um rather than shown as basically an amendment. Um, so we're working on that and uh couple of other just, you know, tire kicking type things that are going on uh in the office that may turn into applications. Uh, it's some, got an email from someone at the midway about a sign. Um, so hopefully that means things are coming to a a positive close for them. Uh, that's about it.
I have a question for Mike.
Yes, Nord.
Mike, uh did you put the training opportunities for the commission members on the website, the town website with links so we could get our our mandatory training?
Um, I I don't know if they're on the website. I know we did email them out after we talked about this, I think, maybe the December meeting. Um, the calendar is, the the links come from Clear and I don't know if they've got anything updated for two thousand twenty-four, but I'll look and see, see if we can get them posted.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Mike, this is more of a building official thing than than you, but uh it looks like the activity at the midway is accelerating like crazy. Do you have any sense for when they think they're going to be reopening? Uh, when I went by the other day, they were putting in place what looked to be a floor-to-ceiling uh windows that would open up to a patio. Uh, and there's a lot of other things going on there. Any sense of what the timeline is for that?
Um, I don't have a sense on that and and frankly, everything that's been conveyed to us has been, you know, three, four, five, six times as long as they said. So I don't know that I'd even rely on the information that I had, if I had it. Um, the, they do have those modifications which they proposed. If you recall way back early COVID. Um, you, the commission did review a patio expansion for that property, so that will be incorporated into that, which is probably what you're seeing. I assume if they reached out about the sign, uh they're hopefully feeling like things are moving in the right direction. My guess is that they're going to be targeting warm weather because that's when, you know, the patio would work. Um, but I'm not, I'm not sure where things stand as far as the uh level of inspections at this point.
Thanks, Ben.
Anything else for Mike? No, seeing as not, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion from Richard. Is there a second? Tom, I think you're trying. We'll say Tom Hastings seconded.
Second, yep.
There we go. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you again for your attention, your effort, your input. It's greatly, greatly appreciated. I think it was a good meeting, good discussion. Uh, thank you to our guests. And um uh, again, if you have training outstanding, uh, please try and work on that. Michael, try and get some information out if you can find anything, even an update that Clear doesn't have a uh um, an update yet would be fine. Um, and again, thank you and stay out of the snow. Be safe.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks you as well.
Night all.